Do you think it will be Monday?
Sure, you can do it.
I will knock an alarm so I don't forget.
Council Meeting. Megan, would you please take the role?
Davis, here.
Lampy.
Here.
Board. Bart. Blanke.
Here.
Smith. Schmidt.
Here.
Wetzel.
Here.
Mildenhauer.
Very good. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, the first item on our agenda is the minutes of the council meeting from December 3rd. Anybody have any corrections or comments on those minutes? All right. Next is an opportunity for comments from citizens present. Megan? Do you guys want to ha- if you have any, just pass them to the clerk? Thank you.
Eric Klug?
Eric, did you win an award? Are you that Klug? For the, your Christmas lights?
It wasn't posted yet.
It was today.
I haven't seen it yet.
Oh, well, I'm sorry. Everyone, Eric won an award today for his Christmas lights. I saw it today on social, yeah, congrats, man. I can't remember which one it was, but I know you won one. It just connected.
915 Casey Drive.
Very good. We'll have to get out there. Very good. Sorry if I hatched that egg.
Yeah, thanks.
Too early. Go ahead.
Eric Klug, 915 Casey Drive. Just want to speak on the Edgefield subdivision that's going to be being discussed tonight, so... Two main topics I think I wanted to get through in the three minutes I have. One, from the conversations I've had with the citizens, not only in Hep Heights, but throughout. We don't want it. I know that's not what you guys want to hear, but it's not something that we want. The biggest, and then the next thing I really wanted to dug, dig down into is, not only in Hep Heights, but in other subdivisions in the town that this developer has done, we have drain, drain water problems. I emailed Andrew this morning a few pictures, and that's just from Hep Heights. I got some more today that I'll be shooting your way from Grandview, that we, we are swamped with water there. I know Brad's seen it. What I would really like to know is, are we going to hold this developer accountable first before we allow them to move forward on another project? Because in my line of work as a quality guy, we can't fail twice and keep going. We, we have to address what's wrong and fix it before we can move on. So, what I'd like to know from you guys, and what I'm hoping you guys can, can give back at some point, is, are you holding that developer accountable for the mistakes they've already made? So, that's what I got today.
Thank you. Phil Huggin?
Okay, I'm, I'm Phil Huggin, 907 Casey Drive, and I'm here for the same reason Eric was. I think everybody in our neighborhood is pretty much dead set against the development there, mainly for a lot of the reasons that Eric had said. And I know my neighbor Dean has problems with the water running off as well. At a planning commission meeting, I think I can sort of speak to Eric's question about the developer and their, I guess attitude would be the proper word, for the problems that, you know, our neighbors are having. When that was brought up at the planning commission meeting, the answer was short and sweet to, well, we followed what, whatever requirements were, you know, to just basically kind of blow us off. As opposed to, oh, we didn't realize that was an issue, and, you know, maybe we can come out and take a look at it. Even if they didn't even want to do anything, at least they could have volunteered to, we'll see what we can do, or we could come out and look, and then, you know, cover their butt, but it just didn't sit well with me about their attitude about that. The rest of my things are kind of philosophical about what we want with this development. Do we really want Watertown to become Oconomowoc West? I talked with our realtor that sold us our house, and she said she's doing a lot of business with people that would really rather move to Oconomowoc, but are coming to Watertown and Johnson Creek because they can get, they can't afford the $550,000 homes in Oconomowoc, but they can get a home for $400,000 here or in Johnson Creek, and they're willing to drive the extra 15 minutes on their commute to Waukesha or Milwaukee, and not have to pay $600,000 or $550,000 for a home in Oconomowoc. At the first meeting that we came to from this, it was brought up the issue of jobs in this city and the lack of housing. Two issues with that is, one, the people that are working at Fisher Barton or any of the other places on 12th Street or anything like that, they're not going to be able to afford these homes, so we're not helping them as far as their employment issues by building these homes. And secondly, is that really our responsibility? People commute, commute to jobs all the time, and if they really want that job, they'd be willing to find housing elsewhere and then commute, and then be part of the community that way. There's a development along Highway P, west of Highway P, on the north side of Oconomowoc, that I drove by about a month ago, and my first thought when I drove by it was, that it's really unsightly. It looked like there was no plan whatsoever, and they just dropped a bunch of boxes into an open field. And I really am worried that that's what's going to happen with this development. That the developer doesn't care, they're just there for putting the houses up, selling them, and then moving on to their next project. And lastly, the first meeting that we came to, somebody had said, one of the, I forget which one of you board members had brought this up, about keeping Watertown moving forward. And I guess my question would be for everybody to consider before this moves forward, is what your vision is for keeping Watertown moving forward? Is it adding all this extra housing and the strain that that's going to put on the infrastructure, sewers, schools, roads, and things like that, at the cost of more tax revenue? Agreed. Or is the vision of Watertown moving forward, improving the quality of life for those of us that are already here, and keeping Watertown Watertown, as opposed to becoming something else? That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I ran a little bit over.
That's okay. Anybody else, Megan? Anybody that's attending remotely that would like to comment? They all look like our team. All right, we do have another opportunity at the end of our meeting as well. We also have a public hearing this evening. This is a public hearing for the wastewater treatment plant facilities planned as required by Wisconsin Administrative Code. I will open that public hearing. If anyone would like to comment, go to the microphone. Just kidding. Anyone remotely? All right, very good. We'll close that public hearing then, and then let's move on to reports. You will have the licensing board minutes from November 13th, tourism from November 14th, park, rec, and forestry from both November 18th and 22nd, site plan review from November 25th, plan commission from November 25th, finance from November 25th, public safety from December 4th, and site plan from December 9th. Anybody have any questions or comments on any of those minutes? Yes, sir.
Call everybody's attention to 7C. Those are the park, rec, and forestry minutes from November 18. And within the packet, specifically 5B on page 236 of the, of the packet. So, I'm not going to make you read it. We've been getting a couple of requests in park and rec lately, and I don't think this was necessarily characterized in, in the minutes. We've had a couple of requests with regard to basically suggested changes, improvements to a couple of our in-the-city water impounds. This one happened to be around Lake Victoria. The minutes from the next meeting will probably be a request that talks a little bit about some desired boat ramp improvements for the homeowners that put their boats in seasonally. So, the, the additional piece I wanted to do there is, is basically make, make, make you aware that we're starting to get a few more of those requests. A little bit of the color from the, the park and rec is also some interest, maybe in terms of what it looks like for, let's say, a special assessment district for some of those areas for interested improvements, or otherwise helping people who are interested organize in a meaningful way so that they can basically pull resources and, and advocate them for things that are basically going to help out their area.
Thank you. Mr. Blanke?
Just one item that I believe is a misprint, but I'm going to ask for clarification. On the finance committee meeting, minutes from, on page 242, item number three in regards to some promotions in the police department. For one of the two sergeants, it says $2 an hour. Is that the raise, or is that a misprint and should read 42, much like the other one?
42. Thanks for pointing that out. Anybody else? All right, very good. Let's move then to communications and recommendations. The first is employee recognitions. We are recognizing today Marty Larson with Public Works for five years, and Victoria Parker with the Health Department for five years. So, we're grateful to both of them, to their service, for their service to our city. You also have in your packet the fire department monthly report. Does anyone have any questions I can pass along to the chief?
I had a question about, I think it's listed as Zone 14. Not sure where that is.
What page are you on? 252?
It's close.
254.
Yeah, it's 254. That's the response time is listed for Zone 15, excuse me, has 11 minutes. I can't figure out where Zone 15 is.
Okay. I'll have her follow up with you, without looking at a map. I do not know either, and the whole...
There's a map on...
It might be the town of Shields, but I don't, I would just be hypothesizing, so let me ask the chief that, and I'll have her follow up with you. So, what is Zone 14?
15.
Oh, 15. I'm glad, thank you, I'm glad I said that aloud.
14 is close. Actually, 14 and 15, because 14's at nine minutes.
Right.
15's 11.
Okay.
So, to, to build on to that, I think one of the things we had, we had previously received, when we were getting information about zone calls, is, was a little bit of information about target response rates. I remember we were doing that, and we were talking about sighting of the new fire station, so maybe that's information that could kind of go hand in hand, is basically how are we doing versus basically the expected for each one of the zones.
That's why I asked her the question last time we got this, because I thought it was eight minutes was the target.
It depends on the type of call, what the target or response time is. But I will share both of those with her. I do know that the new system that you all have recently approved is going to dramatically improve their ability to pull data, but I do think these are still two questions she can cer- I know she can answer. So, I will give those to the, to the chief. Anybody else on that item? All right. Okay, I wanted to provide you all a quick update on the bridge. I was notified at the end of last week that there is an issue with the, the foundation on the east side. So, CTI discovered that they poured that foundation in the wrong place. It's off by about five to 12 inches across the footing. They spent a week and a half or so doing analysis to see if they could realign the bridge design to accommodate where the footing was poured, and it was deduced that they could not. So, I wanted to bring this all to your attention because if you haven't already, you certainly will get asked, why are they removing concrete from the, the site? I believe they mobilized yesterday, and I know for sure that they've started removing that footing today. So, at this juncture, we're still aiming towards early spring. We're supposed to have an updated schedule tomorrow, which is, I believe is the, yeah, tomorrow, the 18th, at our regular bridge meeting. So, I did, you know, say to DOT, this sounds very familiar to what has happened in the past, and they reassured me that they are staying on top of, ensuring that we get an updated schedule, that the liquidated damages are much more substantial, and make it far more difficult for them to do that calculation that they were doing earlier when we had the first issue. So, at this point, there's no, you know, we're still aiming for early spring, but I, I felt, and Andrew as well, we felt it was appropriate to make sure you all knew, in case you were asked, why concrete is leaving the site that's freshly poured.
If it's, if it's a footing, and the water level is back up to normal, will they have to drain the river again?
They won't be doing, they won't be lowering the river, but they will continue to do dewatering with the pumps that they have on site with the co- in the cofferdam that they have installed. Did I get that right? Very good. Yes, sir.
Was this, for lack of a better term, operator error, or was this an issue with design?
So, the answer that I got when I asked that question is that the survey was off. Have you heard anything more substantial than that? If you have, go to a microphone, but I asked what happened. They said it was built according to the design, but it, the survey was off. It must have been off because it's in the wrong spot, is what I was told. So... Anybody else on that one? Okay. I will have that meeting as we do every Wednesday, right away in the morning, so we should have an update on the schedule. If you have any questions, obviously you can always reach out to Andrew or I, and we'll make sure that this is on the next council agenda so that we can provide an update. All right. With that then, let's move to the accounts payable. Anyone have any questions on the accounts? All right. And then next is Ms. Laney's business. You have the payroll summary from November 11th to 26th. Any questions on that? All right. And then let's move to licenses. The first item is the memo from the clerk, and it does have a recommended denial by the licensing board that pertains to item B, which is to review and take action on an application for an operator license for Ashley Grimm. Mr. Smith?
I would move for the denial of the application for the operator's license based on category one and category two.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Second by Mr. Blanke. Anyone have any questions, comments? All those in favor of the denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, then let's move to ordinances. The first is ordinance 24-33. This is to amend chapter 550 of our official zoning map of the city of Watertown through amendments to language to sections 550-38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, and 550-150 and 152. This is in chapter 532, which is our floodplain, shoreline, wetland zoning code. This is here from me and the planning commission on its first reading. Mr. Blanke?
I'll move forward, that's 24-32.
Thank you, sir. Second by Mr. Board. Any questions from anybody, comments? Megan?
Blanke?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt? Wetzel? Mildenhauer?
Aye.
Davis? Lampy?
Aye.
Board? Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 24-34. This is to amend chapter 500-3B, stop intersections. This is here from Ms. Davis and public safety and welfare on the first reading. Yes, ma'am. Ordinance 24-34. Motion by Davis, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments from anyone on this one? Megan?
Davis? Lampy? Board?
Aye.
Blanke?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Mildenhauer?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to one.
All righty. Let's go then to resolutions. The first is Exhibit 9687. This is a resolution to authorize the joint powers agreement with Dodge County. I, this is here for me as the sponsor. Mr. Lampy?
I move to approve Exhibit 9687.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Lampy, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. We do these every year, so they should look familiar. We're going to do the exact same thing in just a moment for Jefferson County as well. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, let's go to Exhibit 9688. This is also the resolution to authorize the joint powers agreement, but this is with Jefferson County. Mr. Smith?
Motion, Deborah.
Thank you, sir. Sir's second. Second by Mr. Lampy. Again, any discussion or questions?
Is that 86 or 88?
That was 9686. Oh, 96...
88.
88. It does say 86 at the bottom of this exhibit. So, we'll get that changed. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, next is Exhibit 9689. This is a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for the Hunter Oaks Enclave subdivision. This is here from me and the planning commission. Mr. Lampy?
Approve 9689.
Thank you, sir. Second by Mr. Blanke. Any questions or comments? Yes.
This is in the area that we did the road cleanup last time.
Yes. Anyone else on this one? Megan?
Lampy?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
Lampy? Board? Blanke?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Mildenhauer?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to one.
All righty. Let's go then to resolutions. The first is Exhibit 9687. This is a resolution to authorize the joint powers agreement with Dodge County. I, this is here for me as the sponsor. Mr. Lampy?
I move to approve Exhibit 9687.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Lampy, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. We do these every year, so they should look familiar. We're going to do the exact same thing in just a moment for Jefferson County as well. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, let's go to Exhibit 9688. This is also the resolution to authorize the joint powers agreement, but this is with Jefferson County. Mr. Smith?
Motion, Deborah.
Thank you, sir. Sir's second. Second by Mr. Lampy. Again, any discussion or questions?
Is that 86 or 88?
That was 9686. Oh, 96...
88.
88. It does say 86 at the bottom of this exhibit. So, we'll get that changed. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, next is Exhibit 9689. This is a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for the Hunter Oaks Enclave subdivision. This is here from me and the planning commission. Mr. Lampy?
Approve 9689.
Thank you, sir. Second by Mr. Blanke. Any questions or comments? Yes?
This is in the area that we did the road cleanup last time.
Yes. Anyone else on this one? Megan?
Lampy?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
It's off by about five to twelve inches across the footing. Um, they spent a week and a half or so doing analysis to see if they could realign the bridge design to accommodate where the footing was poured. Um, and it was deduced that they could not. Uh, so, I wanted to bring this all to your attention because, uh, if you haven't already, you certainly will get asked, why are they removing concrete from the, the site? Um, I believe they mobilized yesterday and I know for sure that they've started removing that footing today. Um, so at this juncture, we're still aiming towards early spring. Um, we're supposed to have an updated schedule tomorrow, uh, which is, I believe is that, yeah, tomorrow, the eighteenth, um, at our regular bridge meeting. So, um, I did, you know, say to DOT, this sounds very familiar to what has happened in the past. Um, and they reassured me that, um, they are staying on top of, um, ensuring that we get an updated schedule, that the liquidated damages are much more substantial, um, and make it far more difficult for them to do that calculation that they were doing earlier when we had the first issue. So, at this point, there's no, you know, we're still aiming for early spring, but I, I felt, and Andrew, uh, as well, we felt it was appropriate to make sure you all knew in case you were asked why concrete is leaving the site that's freshly poured.
If it's, if it's a footing and the water level is back up to normal, will they have to drain the river again?
They won't be doing, um, they won't be lowering the river, but they will continue to do dewatering with the pumps that they have on site with the co- in the cofferdam that they have installed. Did I get that right? Very good. Yes, sir.
Was this, for lack of a better term, operator error or was this an issue with design?
Uh, so, the answer that I got when I asked that question is that the survey was off. Have you heard anything more substantial than that? If you have, go to a microphone, but... I asked what happened. They said it was built according to the design, but it, the survey was off. It must have been off because it's in the wrong spot. Is what I was told. So... Anybody else on that one? Okay. Um, I will have that meeting as we do every Wednesday, um, right away in the morning. So, we should have an update, uh, on the schedule. If you have any questions, obviously you can always reach out to Andrew or I, um, and we'll make sure that this is on the next council agenda so we can provide an update. All right. With that then, let's move to the accounts payable. Anyone have any questions on the accounts? All right. And then next is, uh, Ms. Laney's business. You have the payroll summary from November eleventh to twenty-sixth. Any questions on that? All right. And then let's move to licenses. The first item is the memo from the clerk. Um, and it does have a recommended denial, uh, by the licensing board, uh, that pertains to Item B, which is to review and take action on an application for an operator license for Ashley Grimm. Mr. Smith?
I would move for the denial of the application for the operator's license based on Category One and Category Two.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Second?
Second by Mr. Blenke. Anyone have any questions, comments? All those in favor of the denial, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, then let's move to ordinances. The first is Ordinance twenty-four dash thirty-three. This is to amend Chapter five fifty of our official zoning map of the city of Watertown through amendments to language to sections five fifty dash thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, and five fifty dash one fifty and one fifty-two. Uh, this is in Chapter five thirty-two, which is our floodplain shoreline wetland zoning code. This is here from me and the Planning Commission on its first reading. Mr. Blenke?
I'll move forward. That's twenty-four dash thirty-two.
Thank you, sir. Second by Mr. Board. Any questions from anybody, comments? Megan?
Blenke?
Aye.
Smith? Schmidt? Wetzel? Mildenhauer? Davis? Lampy?
Aye.
Board? Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is Ordinance twenty-four dash thirty-four. This is to amend Chapter five hundred dash three B, stop intersections. This is here for Ms. Davis and Public Safety and Welfare on the first reading. Yes, ma'am. Ordinance twenty-four thirty-four. Motion by Davis, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments from anyone on this one? Megan?
Davis? Lampy? Board?
Aye.
Blenke? Smith?
Aye.
No.
Wetzel? Mildenhauer? Motion passed seven to one.
All righty, let's go then to resolutions. Um, the first is Exhibit ninety-six eighty-seven. This is a resolution to authorize the joint powers agreement with Dodge County. I, uh, this is here for me as the sponsor. Mr. Lampy?
I move to approve, um, Exhibit ninety-six eighty-seven.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Lampy, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. We do these every year, so they should look familiar. We're going to do the exact same thing in just a moment for Jefferson County as well. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, let's go to Exhibit ninety-six eighty-eight. This is also the resolution to authorize the joint powers agreement, but this is with Jefferson County. Mr. Smith? Thank you, sir. Sir's second. Second by Mr. Lampy. And again, any discussion or questions?
Is that eighty-six or eighty-eight?
That was ninety-six eighty-six. Oh, ninety-six...
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. It does say eighty-six at the bottom of this exhibit. So, we'll get that changed. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, next is Exhibit ninety-six eighty-nine. This is a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for the Hunter Oaks Enclave subdivision. This is here from me and the Planning Commission. Mr. Lampy?
Approve ninety-six eighty-nine.
Thank you, sir. Second by Mr. Blenke. Any questions or comments? Yes?
This is in the area that we did the, uh, road cleanup last time.
Yep. Anyone else on this one? Megan?
Lampy?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
Blenke?
Aye.
Smith? Schmidt? Wetzel? Mildenhauer? Davis? Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you. Next is Exhibit ninety-six ninety. This is a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for the Edgefield subdivision. This is here from me and the Planning Commission. Mr. Lampy?
Approve ninety-six ninety.
Motion by Mr. Lampy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blenke. Comments, questions? Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to amend the resolution to strike Condition Number Eight, perform a traffic impact analysis on the plat and surrounding area. Um, both our city engineer and the developer have agreed that that is not necessary at this time.
Because of the road?
Yes, because of the road.
So, at Planning Commission, a road extension was requested, uh, by, uh, some folks in the room and, uh, it was extending River?
Yes.
River, uh, to the subdivision. So, that there's multiple two entrances, two in and out. Did you hold up a two? Okay, thank you. So, just for perspective, that was, that was the adjustment on that piece. So, it's a motion to amend. Is there a second to that effect? Seconded by Mr. Lampy. Questions, comments? Yes, sir. On just the amendment? Okay. Any questions on just the amendment? All right, uh, so I'm going to take a vote. All those in favor on just the amendment, please say, actually, let's take the roll. I probably should on amendment. Go ahead.
Blenke?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt? Wetzel? Mildenhauer? Davis? Lampy? Board? Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, now we're at an amended version of this resolution. Did you have something now, Mr. Smith?
Well, I was just interested in, um, some of the concerns that had been raised, um, previously relating to primarily, I guess, stormwater. Is that, uh, something that, um, is, um, possible for our Plan Commission or at least our Plan Commission representative to address for us?
Otherwise, I can have Andrew come up to you.
I think I'd prefer, since he's here, for Andrew to discuss that. He's going to be more knowledgeable on it, but as the law is that stormwater needs to be managed. Any stormwater runoff from an area needs to be managed and contained by that developer. They can't just discharge it somewhere else, so, but I think Andrew can speak far more eloquently on it.
No, that's fair. Um, all, all stormwater runoff does need to be managed on site. The developer will need to meet Wisconsin DNR requirements and city requirements. Will review the stormwater management plan submitted by the developer for this project and make sure it meets city codes and Wisconsin DNR codes. It does need a DNR permit, given the size in addition to a city permit. Are there any drainage related questions that I can answer?
There's the issue of the stormwater which originates on site or traverses the site to a few, uh, an alternative location. But is it possible that in the process of the development ongoing, that it might be, uh, constructed in a way that can help alleviate already existing off-site stormwater problems?
Yeah, that is possible. So, without getting too technical, um, our, our code and DNR code is set up that water leaving the site has to be, um, it'll drain at a lesser volume, uh, rate versus the, the pre-development condition. So, yes, to, to answer your question. Um, right now, it's just kind of a graded farm field. Um, we're going to be installing storms, or the developer will be installing storms who are, and improving the site in that manner, um, in addition to grading activities. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
So, question, the topographical map that's listed on the second portion of that, it should be like page three twenty-three, I think, if it's right on my notes. Are those gradient lines accurate in regards to the steepness of the drop on the County Road A side of the, uh, plan? Because that looks like it's got a pretty steep runoff compared to the, what would be the west side.
Yeah, the grades are, are existing grades, so those, those should be accurate versus what's there, uh, for what's there now. Uh, it doesn't show proposed grades, so the developer and their engineer will, you know, put together a proposed grading plan that we'll review in engineering to make sure it meets our requirements there.
And the, to follow up with that, so the minimum criteria set by the state and the city, is that going to be adequate to address the concerns brought forth in regards to the current, uh, alleged failure of the current system? I can't speak definitively because I have been out there looking, but based on the reports we're hearing, is it going to address those issues or just going to make it worse? Specifically, but looking at the gradient change, the southeast corner is going to get hit the most with the water grading if it continues with the current grade.
Sure. So, there's kind of a break in the hill, uh, between the, the former development and this development. This development would, would again manage everything on site, so it wouldn't really, they drain to different locations, um, just at a, at a glance, but, um, we would be reviewing everything in-house to make sure it does meet our requirements.
Andrew, if, if I'm not mistaken, there's actually supposed to be two ponds. Sorry, two ponds at this, one at the east end and one at the west end, correct?
That's correct.
So, on, basically on either side of the hill?
So, I understand what you said, but you talked about drainage leaving the site. I think the residents are talking about drainage within the site. Their, their difficulty is where the stormwater on the property is going. And we're talking about, I mean, I wasn't here, I'm assuming a twenty-five, thirty-year-old development. So, what are our options now that we're adding on to that old development? Uh, because I hear what you're saying about the new, right? And we used to call it an agricultural rate discharge off the property, so I don't know if that's still a term, but I understand what you're saying about discharging the water. The question that they asked was the water on the property, not the stuff leaving the property.
So, I can have Stephen chime in. That's not really probably an Andrew question. Uh, today we're looking at this plat and what will we do about an issue on existing development?
Yeah, but to the, to the residents' question...
I'm just asking, is that your question?
Yeah, but to the residents' comments, it's the same developer.
I was, I was going to chime in on that. I got that, so I, I'm, this is what I'm, I'm not interested in doing. I run this meeting. So, I'm going to do my best to keep us respectful and answering questions and on, on the topic. So, I'm going to answer this question the way I've experienced it for my period of time here. This isn't the first time we've had an active, uh, neighborhood that has an issue with stormwater. I've been a part of many of them, so have you. They, uh, arise for a variety of reasons. I'm not picking any one reason because I don't want anyone to think I'm defending any one project, but there are many reasons that they can happen. What we've done, what I've experienced, is that when we know about them, when they're given to me or to engineering, to me, I give it to engineering, we poll that, the plans that we approved, we look at the as-built that we have, and we offer corrections if they need to be made. We've had cases in the past where we still had retainage from projects, and so developers, we use that retainage to make the necessary improvements. Uh, we've had them where, uh, they were the result of, um, neighbors that have graded their own land. And so then we've said, hey, neighbor, you are putting your water into your neighbor's yard and that needs to be corrected. So, there are mechanisms that we have, uh, for existing neighborhoods that we can use to make those corrections. And I know, it sounds like Andrew got some photos, uh, today. And so, I presume, I don't want to speak for you, but I presume the next thing is for you all to review the photos, review the, go through the process I just described. Review the plans, determine what the error is, who's at fault, and then within the authority we have, uh, we, as best we can, have people correct. Is, do you want to correct me if I misspoke anywhere in there?
No, that's the process we generally follow. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll take it on a case-by-case basis.
I, you all have heard me say this a few times. There were a period, there was a period of time, uh, in like the two thousands, perhaps, where we weren't able, uh, with staffing to do as-built inspections. As a result, some of these things bubble up, uh, over time, whether it's a road that's heaving or crumbling, as in our case in our neighborhood, um, or other, other areas, uh, of infrastructure. And so, when we are there brought to our attention, we do our best to, to correct them within the power and authority that we have. So, it's not, I, I just don't want anyone to, um, get the impression that it's falling on deaf ears or it's immovable. We, we've fixed the things that we, uh, can fix once they're brought to our attention. Yes, sir. And I'll come to you.
I appreciate your comments, and I think it is true that a lot of times, um, a subsequent development presents the opportunity to not only address standard issues, but oftentimes move forward and correct longer-standing problems that but for the new development might not be as easily addressed. Um, I think something that the concerned citizens here tonight and also at a previous meeting, there were several others that had come in and had addressed some concerns, which I'm confident the city will ensure are addressed along the way, but at what point in time, or is there a specific point in time where the citizens might be able to have an update on the progress of the development to the point where they are better able to have confidence that the concerns they're raising have been or are being addressed?
Yeah, so I think as it would pertain to this, this potential project or any others, uh, site plan and planning commission, really more site plan is where the meat and potatoes of that level of review happens. Um, so a public meeting, granted, the Site Planner Review Committee is during the day, so I'm, I'm owning that upfront because it's largely our department heads that meet with these developers. But then, you know, beyond once, uh, a project, you know, this is just a plat, so there's many more public phases of, of that that would have to occur. We review certain plans in-house. Uh, I, are these ones you plan to review in-house?
They will, and we haven't received plans yet. It's preliminary plat, so, um, it's, it's a little ways off, but once we do get the plans, we'll review them in-house and provide comments to the developer on them.
And I, I'll just add this too. Uh, we've had plenty, we've been blessed to have a lot of projects to consider, and there's never been a time that he and I have never, have not been willing to meet with residents that have questions. So, and I know, uh, Alder Blenke's been doing a lot of liaisoning as well, so I, if people want to be kept in the loop, we're, we, we are willing and, and have a track record of doing that. Yes?
Just have a question looking at the, this is a proposed site plan, just like the first kind of once over with it.
This is not even a, is a, a plat review.
Plat review?
Yep.
Okay. So, I'm looking at the, the, the lines on here indicating potential future lotting based on what it says. What I'm not seeing anywhere on there unless I'm missing it, Andrew, is proposed locations retention ponds or drainage improvements. There is a couple, there's an indicator in Section Five of a future drainage easement, and then there's some potential wetland, um, classifications from May of twenty-four on Outlot Two on the east side. So, my question is, were they in there originally or were they not in there originally in regards to potential for locations of retention ponds that are, are going to need to be there?
So, there's two outlots shown in the plat. Um, the mayor alluded to the two outlots, one's on the east side, one's on the west side. Uh, stormwater from the site is going to have to drain to both of those outlots to be treated before it's discharged from the development. Uh, one of the comments, uh, during the site planner view was making sure that easements are shown on the lots for drainage, so we can provide, uh, you know, drainage easements and appropriate grading between lots.
So, I'm, I'm assuming then, because that one indicator on Outlot Two along with Lot twenty and nineteen are indicated as a designated wetland area, are they going to get the improvement from the DNR then potentially to build on those with that annotation as of May twenty-four according to the plan?
If they do fill, uh, in the wetland, they'll need approvals from DNR, yes.
Okay.
Others? Mr. Lampy?
I'm, I'm going to have a little bit of take here. I, I love, I love the communications about the, about the drainage. I, I did note, um, also on the plats that there was a lot of notation and allocations here for drainage as a future connections and inlets to, to stormwater. There seems to be a lot of attention to that. So, um, obviously, that's, that's something that's top of mind. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm flat out excited to see a, a, you know, a single-family proposal come to us. Um, you know, in, in terms of development philosophy, yeah, I want to fill in basically the entire area that's within our ring road. Um, I want Watertown to expand. I want us to continue to attract new residents and provide places for people to move up, um, in their housing. Um, that's something that my family certainly did, is we got into a starter house, lived there for four years, moved to a different place. I think that's a natural um, evolution and something that we should and continue to encourage citizens of the city to do. Um, we've had a lot of discussions here where we basically, um, have poo-pooed other proposals that included development pieces that we haven't liked for multifamily, for density, for location, other places. This is a flat-out fantastic place to put single-family. This is a fantastic proposal with single-family. This is, in fact, exactly the type of thing we should be supporting.
Thank you. Mr. Blenke?
So, I just wanted to speak briefly on Conditions Nine and Twelve of Resolution. I want to...
What, give, what number are you?
L-one.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, it's not you. Obviously, we know it's, it's your mic, so...
I think that the developer has been working with us in good faith to resolve issues, listen to the concerns of the citizens, and make adjustments to the plan. Example one is these two items in particular. If you look at the plat on page two, sorry, three twenty-two, you'll note that there are two road stubs, one on the south and one on the west, and there is also an easement in the southeast corner. The developer agreed at the Plan Commission to take that easement and put that road through, which was a large concern of the citizens because all of the traffic from this neighborhood and the adjacent neighborhood would effectively all be filtered through one road, um, Perry Way, that would then also have industrial traffic from an industrial park, Johnsonville, and all that back in that area. So, this was a big concern of theirs. And with the, the developer agreed to put this road through with the condition that they then wouldn't have to build out those road stubs. So, I think they are negotiating with us in good faith. I think they're trying to do the right thing, and they're not, you know, they're not trying to damage any relationships. They're trying to go right by everyone involved. So, I think this is a good development, and I think they'll continue to work with us to make sure that it's done correctly.
Thank you. Anybody else on this one? Yes, sir.
The developer here?
Yes, he is.
Can you come up and just address some of these issues?
Hi, Corey O'Donnell, uh, Graymar LLC, four thirty-five, Village Walk Lane, Johnsons Creek. Uh, we've been active in the city of Watertown in Jefferson County with building, uh, for many, many years, and we've been very active with building in Watertown. In fact, we've built in numerous locations in the city and, and we continue to, to want to have locations to build. Hep Heights was a community that I believe was developed in two thousand and four. Uh, it had Hep Heights Phase One, Hep Heights Phase Two, uh, where we purchased lots in those developments. We weren't the developer of that subdivision, and we acquired an outlot, and in that outlot, we finished, uh, put in a road stub and did Hep Heights Phase Three with thirteen lots. So, you've got a, a co-mingled area there with Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three, and we did a lot of building in Phase Two and, and some, actually, in Phase One as well. And the interpretation was is that we were the developer for the entire project, and we weren't. So, we were, we were working with Phase One and Phase Two and implemented changes in Phase Three to help with stormwater. We increased the stormwater, uh, basin, mitigated, uh, in, uh, items that were incorrect for that stormwater basin, uh, worked with Maureen McCormick with the city of Watertown. She identified issues that need to be corrected. And I think you'll see in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, we made substantial changes to that stormwater basin to help with the overall stormwater for the site. Uh, same thing with Grandview Heights. Grandview Heights was a subdivision that was developed in, oh, numerous phases over the years. Uh, and I think, uh, the developer, Mary Rose Subdivision, just finished the, the most recent phase just this year. Uh, we worked with Mary Rose and purchased many lots in that subdivision, and, uh, we, we built many homes, and, and there have been some stormwater concerns in that subdivision that have been brought to our attention. We're, we're a builder, we're an owner, just like an owner that would purchase a house from us when we have to deal with these stormwater issues on these lots. And we actually have worked with numerous owners, and we've run into situations where adjacent homeowners that, that have been there for twenty years have, have done something that does cause a significant issue that we can't implement the drainage as designed. So, you know, our, our, our hands are tied by the, the grading plan and the, the stormwater plans that have been approved for the subdivision. So, when we construct our homes, those are the plans that we have to hear to. And if, uh, an adjacent, adjacent neighbor might be two feet high or two feet lower, have done something, now we have to last one in. done something, now we have to last one in, try and correct and fix those remedies where, you know, sometimes it's an oxymoron where you can't. But we do the best we can to work with the neighbors and to address the stormwater issues. Here in in this particular site that we're talking about with this preliminary plat, you know, we do have a stormwater plan that we do need to implement. But right now, at the preliminary plat phase, and we haven't done any design, any engineering on any of the stormwater yet, we need the green light on the preliminary plat to then engage our engineers and say, okay, let's start to work on the design for the subdivision, implementing the DNR standards, implementing the city of Watertown standards, and then looking at any, any potential ways that we can aid with the adjacent stormwater off-site that that we're dealing. I mean, we're taking water from adjacent neighborhoods, and of course, we need to adhere to that, maintain that, and implement our site in our stormwater. So it all does work together, and as these get developed, I think you'll see improvements in in stormwater in the area, and, you know, we clearly work with city staff to address those concerns.
Good, Mr. Wetzel. What's that?
Understanding, you came, I guess, late to the party, Phase One, Phase Two, but this is all yours. This will be all yours now?
Yeah, this subdivision that that we're projecting here, this Edgefield, would be all of our subdivision, yes. So the the onus would be on us as developer for any stormwater that arises on this site.
Where else have you built in town?
We have Willow Glen off of West. We picked up lots in that subdivision. We've, we've built numerous homes in Grandview Heights. I think over the past five years, we've got 43, 44 homes that we've constructed in city of Watertown.
Anyone else have questions for Corey while he's up there? Thanks, Corey.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments in general? Okay, so just to refresh, we're at an amended version of 9690. The amended version just eliminates item eight. Other comments or questions? Megan? Lampy?
Aye.
Board? Blankey?
Aye.
Smith? Schmidt? Wetzel? Mildenhauer? Davis? Motion passed seven to one. All right, thank you, Megan. Next, then, is exhibit 9691. This is a resolution to enter into an agreement with Meeden Hunt for Engineering Design and Construction Services for the wastewater bio-salads dryer project. This is here from Mr. Board and Public Works.
I will move for 9691.
Motion, Mr. Board, second by Mr. Wetzel. Questions or comments? Megan? Board? Blankey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Mildenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy? Motion passed eight to zero. What number are you, Megan? All right, our next is exhibit 9692. This is a resolution to approve U.S. cellular equipment upgrades on the city hall tower, again, from Mr. Board and Public Works.
I'll move for 9692.
Motion, Mr. Board, second by Mr. Smith. Anyone have questions or comments on this one? Yes?
Just under, we want to update the exhibit on the bottom, it's just listed as X's, so we get the right number on there.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Anybody else on this one? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, next is exhibit 9693. This is a resolution for the purchase of a combination sewer cleaner truck to be used by the city, the city Watertown Water Systems. This is here from Mr. Board and Public Works.
I'll move for 9693.
Motion, Mr. Board, second by Ms. Davis. Questions or comments? Megan? Board? Blankey?
Aye.
Smith? Schmidt? Wetzel? Mildenhauer? Davis? Lampy? Motion passed eight to zero. Very good. All right, the next few that we're going to go into, I just want to make it obvious for anyone attending remotely or in person, any of these potential pay adjustments do not directly impact anyone in this room. They would have to be reelected in order for that to be the case. That's how they've always been done, so I just wanted to to provide that awareness. The first is exhibit 9694. This is a resolution to establish pay for the Office of Alder Person for terms beginning on or after April 15, 2026. This is here from me and the Finance Committee. Ms. Davis?
Motion to approve this?
Thank you, ma'am. Second by Mr. Lampy. Anyone have any questions or comments on this one? Yes, sir.
Couple items. The first, I would prefer to see the minutes from the Finance Committee on the discussion that was had on this resolution and the next two, for that matter, because we're looking at pay increases and the packet was minimal. I know we had the letter from you, Mr. Stevens, but I'd like to see what the discussion was before taking action on this. Second, I have a concern with this because there's currently a challenge to Act 10 working its way through our state court system, and should Act 10 be struck down, we could be facing an extremely challenging budgetary situation. And I'm just wondering if now is the right time to do this when we're facing that. And I know that the dollar amounts don't look like much, but we could be in some pretty severe austerity in another six months.
Yes?
I have the same concern on the finance minutes, so I can provide a little bit of the the flavor of the discussion from that. Generally, where we were talking about finance agreements was, and you'll note in the two resolutions, or the three resolutions on 360, 361, and 362, each of those has an entry from 2025, and that's basically a pre-existing bump, so that one's really not on the table. Where the Finance Committee was, was basically trying to look at a consistent 2% across the board lift for each one of the positions, with the exception of the municipal judge that you'll see in 361, where that basically we were looking to essentially get closer to, I don't want to say market fair rate of of what you're seeing on 361 for that that bump. But otherwise, we basically had a proposal from the city that came in with some slightly higher numbers than 2%. As a Finance Committee, we kind of discussed what comforts are on those things, and basically ended as as 2% after some discussion. So what you're seeing on 360, 361, and 362 is a recommendation from Finance, 2% basically year over year moving forward. And the point of reference we can probably take is in terms of where inflation has been. Obviously, it's been a lot higher than 2% as of late. Target inflation's typically around 3%, so we're still sort of not quite increasing these to a level of inflation per year. So it's, so it's falling slightly behind from, on an inflation basis.
Ms. Davis?
We did entertain that same what-if. What if something happens and we're not able to give the staff a raise equivalent or better? And the answer, and please correct me if I am interpreting this wrong, but I believe the answer we received from the attorney is that we could pass another resolution in that it would be easy to justify a passing of a resolution that decreased the amount that would be going out to these elected officials. Does that make sense? That would be justifiable.
The thing is, I just don't, since it wouldn't take effect till 2026, I don't see the urgency of doing it now, and I think we could wait six months to pass this to let that what-if play out.
Mark?
The key would be to make sure that you don't have anybody that is currently seated making a decision about their own pay.
Going up?
Yes.
That's the, that's the magic.
That's the hesitancy. Is it a have-to tonight? Not at all. We could wait for minutes, but Jonathan's already just typed my minutes for me. But, yeah, it would be, the one hesitancy would be you'd want to have it done before April, so that anybody that is seated in April as a new alder with two years would not be voting for their own pay raise into the future.
Yes.
Yes, I would echo Alderman Blankey's concerns as well. This is the first time I've seen us do more than once at a time, well, that I remember. And we may have done it, I may have missed it, but either way, that's, that's on me if I forgot. I hear you, Alderman Lampy, in regards to us having pay raises that don't keep track with inflation. I get it, but I also don't agree with the term of being public officials, republic servants, to serve our community and our districts. And I've always held the position where we're the only position that can vote ourselves a pay raise, even if it's not keeping pace with inflation. And I, I get it, but the people who work here with the communities and the private businesses, they don't even have that option. So if they get a pay raise that keeps up with inflation, great. Most of them don't. So I can't support us getting a pay raise at this point. Act 10 set aside, the way the environment is, if it pans out, you know, in 18 months or two, six months, it's better, great. But right now, until our community as a whole is on the recovery side of this, I can't support us getting paid more.
Anyone else on this one? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until our first meeting in March.
Sir, a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to table to the second?
I said the first meeting in March.
Sorry, okay, first meeting in March.
Those time.
Okay, and that is not debatable, so we will take a vote on tabling until the first meeting of March. Megan? Blankey?
Aye.
Smith?
Point of order. I keep having concerns about motions that are made that have the language which infer a particular type of motion, but the effect of which is to promote a different. A tabling motion to a time certain is a different motion than a postponement to a date certain. And it seems to me that the motion that was made was to a specific time, the first meeting in March, which, to me, is not a tabling motion.
Okay, so you're saying a postponement to a time certain in?
Yes, that's correct, and the significance of the designation of the motion is one is debatable and one is not.
Yes.
And whenever it's possible to make a motion that's debatable, it furthers the level of understanding that flows from what is supposed to be our deliberate, our deliberative purpose.
Okay, well, I think, you want to do that?
I believe my intent is, as Alder Smith has pointed out, a postponement, not a tabling to a time certain. So I would like to amend it to postpone to that date, not table to that date.
And we're, just to be clear, we're talking about all three in a row, correct, Alder Blankey?
Not yet.
We would have to do each. We would have to do one other.
Yeah, but you're fine with a, since you were the second, are you fine with that? A postponement? Okay, well, that means that we're going to stop calling the roll, and now we can debate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I-
You can debate though.
Only because I, I do have a question.
Sure.
Because there was a very specific date that was identified, is there a reason why that was the date that was selected for the postponement?
Yes, well, we could, in fact, go to the second meeting of March. I chose the first just in case there's any hiccups or anything that happens, and it gives us another council meeting before the spring elections, because as was pointed out, in order for this to be effective as presented, we would need to hold a vote on it prior to the spring election. And I feel that's as far as we can postpone it without impacting it being affected.
Ms. Davis?
I have some concerns to postponing until March, based on our historical passing of these types of resolutions. In 2018, I should go back to 2015. In 2015, we passed these resolutions in November, December, and the same thing was done in 2019, and then, I'm sorry, 2018, and then again in, was it 21? So for the last three times that the council has passed these amendments, it's been in the November, December timeframe. And I think it's important for us to understand why. Why have we been doing that before we change it to March?
Yes, Mr. Lampy?
I, I would, I would echo the comments of Alder, Alder Person Davis on this one. If, I'd also invite folks who are interested in knowing more about the debate of what happened at Finance. We have essentially, the committee is here, we have Alder Person Mildenhauer. I don't want to characterize too much, but I think he was the leading voice in terms of where we came up. Alder Person Davis was there, I was there, the mayor was here. I don't, I don't know what other information we can provide tonight that's going to influence the vote, but I, it's, it seems like a decision like this should be easy to make in your chairs. I'd very much like to make it tonight rather than try to kick the can down the road and think about it again in three months. Hopefully, everybody has had a chance to think about where they stand on Aldermanic and Mayor Olpier over the past couple of years.
Mr. Mildenhauer?
At that meeting, we talked about going to 2%. Before that, it was going to be going up slightly more than 2% for the next, the next couple of years, or the next couple of times. And then we went to 2% across, across the board for the next couple of times, just to level it off. And then we went, then we went down the road after that and kind of went 2% for the next couple of people after that, just to stay at 2% to kind of have a uniform or whatever you want to call it. And we left it go at that, because you could always change it.
Mr. Wetzel? Mr. Wetzel, is your mic on?
I, yeah.
Oh, it is. You just perhaps, yeah, that's so much better.
Okay. Alder Blankey, your concern is not about the 2%, it's about the possible ramifications of Act 10, correct?
Correct. A circuit court judge in D. County recently took action on Act 10, and it is headed for the Wisconsin State Supreme Court. There's a lot of uncertainty with that right now, and I think it's irresponsible to give ourselves, sorry, to give the next group of council members this increase without knowing the effect of that. And to answer Alder Davis's question, why postpone it, it's for that exact reason, to give us as much time to see, perhaps, if the Supreme Court has ruled on it by that time.
Good luck with that, but, good luck with that, but I understand your sentiment.
Anyone else? Factually, to kind of answer your question of why it's important, Mayor's, or Alder Smith was mayor, he may have some insight. Alder Blankey and Alder Mildenhauer have been here before. The three time periods you spoke to, I was a part of, when I inquired about why it was important, because it was always, we have to get this done. It was kind of in conjunction with before papers were, were due back. It was, you know, to just keep it really crisp, that, that process, was what I was informed. Maybe some of these gentlemen that have experience beyond my years here could share more, but that's, that was what I was informed. Anyone else? We're talking just about the postponement to the first council meeting of March at this point. If no one else has comments on the postponement, I'm going to ask Megan to take the roll in just a moment. So if you want to postpone until the first meeting of March, you would vote in favor. If you don't, you'd vote against. Anybody else? Megan? Blankey?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Mildenhauer? Davis? Lampy? Board?
No.
Motion failed, three to four. Five? Five, sorry. One, two, three, four, five, three, right? Failed three to five. Thank you. Thank you, Megan. Okay, so we are back to just the regular version of this resolution before you, 9694. Additional comments or questions from anyone? Yes, sir.
Do we have an estimate as to what the material impact is on the city for the, the proposed increases?
He's going to do the math for you right now. Stephen, I'm going to come to you in just a second. Stephen, I'm going to come to you in just a second, just for awareness. Alder Davis did, I think, characterize your opinion correctly earlier, but I want to just make sure. So was it correct that should we indeed end up in a difficult financial position, that it would be allowable for the alders to vote to reduce their pay?
There would be a method by which we would probably be able to reduce the pay. I don't know that it'd be as simple as a resolution to pass.
Okay.
But justifying reducing the pay for the alders would be easier, or any elected official would be easier than it would be to justify increasing the pay at a later date.
Okay.
Is decreasing pay effective immediate or after an election cycle? Sorry, I wasn't recognized.
Oh, look, I only say that because I don't want people to start arguing earlier. It's important, we have to keep things kosher in here. Did you hear his questions, Stephen? Would it have to wait to then? Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
I did. It wouldn't necessarily have to wait for the next election cycle to reduce the pay. In order to increase the pay, it absolutely has to wait until the next election cycle. But I would have to look into it more to figure out the best way of doing that.
Okay. Yes.
The total annualized increase for alders in year '26 is $1,125, followed by $1,143, followed by in '28, $1,170.
Anybody else on this one? Yes, Mr. Smith?
We're addressing a number of these resolutions which are going to ultimate, excuse me, are going to affect pay for the upcoming next few years. But for the next year, for which we have already passed the budget, the issue affecting the alderperson's pay has already been determined, in other words, for the 2025 budget. And as each successive budget is passed for which these resolutions are setting the standard, they will be making independent decisions at that point in time. In essence, they will be precluding any other decision unless, I guess, the resolution is in some way overturned, which I'm not even sure would be permissible. But in others of the ones that are going to be considered tonight, for instance, the 2025 payroll resolution, that simply is implementing pay issues that have already been voted on when we passed the 2025 budget. And what I think the point raised by being answered by Mr. Stevens is that the total impact of the basic cost of living increase that is being put in place by this resolution, 96-94, is extremely small. And I think that the surest way to undermine what has been in the recent past, a standard approach to try to not dramatically affect the level of pay, but rather to maintain the policy of keeping at least up with the rate of inflation to a substantial extent, is what is being proposed here. I think the Finance Committee reviewed this. I think their recommendation is fair. And I think it is the continuation of a broader policy set in motion quite some number of years ago. And that's why my inclination is to support each one of these.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any last comments from anyone else? All right, Megan.
Davis.
We're voting on, we're voting on just the original version of 96-94.
Aye. Lampy.
No.
Board.
Aye.
Lampy.
No.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
No.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mildenhour.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to two.
Very good. Thank you. Next. Resolution 96-95, this is a resolution to establish the pay for the municipal judge for terms beginning on or after May 1st, 2025. This is again here for me and the Finance Committee. Ms. Davis?
For 96-95, exhibit 96-95.
Motion by Davis, second by Lampy. Comments or questions from anyone on this one? Yes, sir.
As I believe I indicated in my last comments, just want to reiterate here, there's, I believe the pay for 2025 is discretionary, in that it's not necessarily something that was set in stone, but nonetheless, something that we felt strongly about at the Finance Committee in order to get this back, essentially re-indexed, I believe, is where we were headed due to some increases that had not occurred in the past. So I'd invite our Finance Director to-
Since 2015, no pay increases.
Yeah, there's not been any change in this rate of pay since 2015. This $33,000 amount was included in the budget that was approved.
Thank you, Mark. Yes, sir.
Just clarification, that's the base hourly rate or is that the increase?
$33,000 is the-
That's the base.
The base.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you for clarifying that. Yep. Others? Megan.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mildenhour.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right, very good. Next is exhibit 96-97. This, oops, excuse me, did I skip one? 96-96, this is a resolution to establish the pay for the office of the mayor for terms beginning on or after April 15th, 2025. This is here from, I don't know why it says Alder Bartsch on there, but I think it should say Alder Bartsch, in the Finance Committee. Okay?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Mildenhour, second by Mr. Wetzel. I'm a very cadence reader, Megan, so I'm accustomed to saying the same thing. Comments or questions from anyone? Megan?
Mildenhour.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
I will abstain.
Lampy.
No.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
No.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Motion passed, five to two.
All right, now we are on to exhibit 96-97. This is the 2025 payroll resolution. This is here from me and the Finance Committee. Thank you, Mr. Wetzel, second by-
Second.
Mr. Lampy. Ms. Davis.
I'd like to make a motion to amend based on information we've received from a market study on this position. And so I would like to make a motion to amend the 2025 payroll resolution to adjust the water distribution technician position from grade H to grade J.
Sir, second to that amendment, second by Mr. Lampy. I'll give you a little context. When the Finance Committee considered the payroll resolution, this job classification was outstanding. We just didn't have the answer back from Carlson and Detman yet. So they had awareness that this one may be coming and being changed on the floor, and that is indeed what happened. As a reminder, this is in the water utility, so that is a separate budget than the general fund, so it's in our water utility enterprise fund. Yes.
Where is that on the resolution?
Sure, so if you go to the table on page 368, you're going to see water distribution technician. It is one, two, three, fourth from the top. So it's going to go from H and we will place it in J, which is on page 367. J. J. Are you seeing it there? Okay. Other questions or comments on just that amendment? Not the whole resolution, but the amended version here. All right, Megan, will you just take the role on just the amendment, please?
Davis.
Lampy. Board. Lampy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mildenhour.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you. So now we're at an amended version of 96-97. Are there other comments or questions from anyone on the payroll resolution? Megan.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mildenhour.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is exhibit 96-98. This is a resolution to enter into a construction easement agreement with Abolite. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Mildenhour, second by Mr. Wetzel. We just did this right before the meeting tonight. This is just giving us permission to enter into an easement agreement with Abolite in order to do some grading that needs to be done at the station. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we do have another opportunity for comments from citizens present. Yes, sir? Megan, you got one coming here.
Dean Gagliano, 909 KC Drive. I'm tired, I'm going to be talking about the field edge or edge field property. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but some comments from Cory from Graymar, which isn't here now, I kind of wish he was, inspired me to speak, and Mr. Lampy also inspired me to speak. Talking about Cory and what he brought up first, he was only given some half truths. I moved into that community in 2018. And in that community, it wasn't developed at all yet, except for down at the bottom of the hill. Those are some of the really old houses. And then my builder was White Oak, which is in town here, right? And he has a few of those properties. Shortly after I moved in, Lews came in, and they have probably about 75%, maybe even more, of the properties that are in that development. I'll give him some credit, he probably didn't do the infrastructure. A lot of the infrastructure was already there before they started building. But I don't think that's the problem with the stormwater. If you don't know this about Lews homes, they do a 30-year basement guarantee, dry basement guarantee. That's what they do. The way that they achieve that is they do all the grading themselves, or they hire a contractor out to do all the grading. So one characteristic you're going to see from a Lews home, especially in my neighborhood, is it comes out and slopes way down. That's how their grading is for all of their houses. And that slope is creating a swale between all of those Lews houses, and that's why you're seeing all of that stormwater sit there. You can see a non-Lews house that's built because we were responsible for our grading, and we did it in a respectable manner, a slow slope, a slow grade out to our house. I was kind of a victim to this, so my house is right next to a Lews property, and my house is right on top of the hill itself. When they built that house, they decided to build it above the plain of the land. So now my house is about three feet below the actual plane of the land. I have old pictures before there was even a house there. When they decided to grade it, they took some of my property and they graded it even down further into my yard. So when that water drains down, it drains down over into my yard. Thankfully, I haven't had any problems with my house or with any issues with the stormwater at my house. But it's really frustrating to see a developer come in and rip up some of my property to fix their grading or to work on their grading, so they have this 30-year dry basement. So that's one thing that I wanted to bring up. The other thing I wanted to bring up that you, Mr. Lampy, inspired me was something I wrote back in August. At that point in time, we were having these preliminary meetings, and it wasn't the time or place to bring this up. But I did a little bit of research. We have a population of about 23,000 people right now. The median household income is about 67,200, where the national average is about 75,000. Right now, you need about $130,000 to afford a $400,000 house, which is what's going to be the new builds, that they're building, this new plot. We have about 3,202 students in K through 12, which is about a 15-to-one ratio. The average is about 18-to-one, the national average, so we're actually doing pretty well there. But if the rest of their communities are like mine, there are a lot of kids that are about to start kindergarten and go up. So I don't know if that's going to put a strain and stress on us in the future. There's 53 new houses in their plan. Some of those are twin homes as well, so they're not going to be just single-family homes that they're trying to put on that new plot. They're going to have some twin homes there, too. And then, based upon what I saw, the housing shortage here is more for lower-income housing, based upon the comments that I've seen in the past, not for $400,000-plus houses. Seems like a lot of people are looking for those starter homes like you were at the beginning, Mr. Lampy. So, I'm sorry, can I run over a little bit? Is that okay? So what I want to say ultimately is, I want our community to grow as well, I really do, but I don't want to put the cart before the horse. What I'm seeing right now in the six years that I've lived here is a lot of empty storefronts. You know, if we drive down the street, we see a ton of empty storefronts, or businesses that are here for a couple of years and then leave. Like literally, KFC left their old building a couple of weeks after I moved in here in 2018. Couple of years later, there's a new building that's built, they go in there, and they leave in about a year. That's crazy to me. Like, let's get these storefronts filled first, and let's get these storefronts filled with something interesting that's going to bring people into our community. You know, I'm a big brunch guy, I love brunch. There isn't a good place to get an interesting, unique brunch in town. There's a lot of awesome mom-and-pop places, right? If that's what I'm looking for. But quite honestly, I can make that at home. You know, I want something unique. And if I'm going to do that, I have to drive out to Madison, or I have to drive down to Milwaukee. Like, I want something interesting. On top of that, we have this beautiful river that flows through our city, and I watched about an hour and a half video of plans to develop that. And it sounds great, it really does, but it sounds like it's going to be another five to seven years maybe, if we even get it built. That is going to attract people to this community. Something like that will attract people to this community. We don't have that right now. Ultimately, what I'm saying is let's get something attractive in this community to draw people in to want to live in this community. Because right now, people are just moving to this community because they can't afford to live in Oconom Walk, and they still need to commute. So let's build up first and then bring people in. Let's not bring people in and get people frustrated because we don't have the amenities that'll keep people wanting to stay. I'm way past my time now, so I can stop there.
Thank you.
I just wanted to bring that up. Thanks for inspiring me.
Thank you. Any of any others? Anyone else remotely that would like to comment? All right, with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn by Mr. Mildenhour, second by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.